Okay. All right, so. We are, go whenever you are.
All right, so we will call to order the November seventeenth Park Trails in Lakes Commission meeting. Do you want to do roll call or?
Yes, Terry Steenblock.
Here.
Tim Miller.
Here.
Jason Steenblock. Doug Ramseth.
Here.
Tim Gary. Karen Moorhead.
Here.
Betty Guyer.
Here.
All right, and then we'll look for a motion to approve the agenda with one adjustment, striking five A, which is the review of the meeting minutes.
I move we approve the agenda with the striking of five A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we, do you want to roll call it, or do you just want to have us raise our hands? Preference?
I'll roll call it because Karen's just on audio. So Terry Steenblock.
Hi.
Tim Miller.
Hi.
Doug Ramseth.
Hi.
Karen Moorhead.
Hi.
Betty Guyer.
All right, next on the agenda is open forum, and Jamie, I see some names here. I'm not sure if they're part of another agenda item, or if they're here for the open forum.
Um, no open forum submissions received to the City of Forest Lake, so any guests that we have are regarding our regular agenda item, farm parkland dedication request.
Okay. All right, if there are no open forum, then we'll move right on to that one, which is five be the Taylor Farm Park dedication request, and I'm assuming Donovan.
Oh, hang on Donovan, you gotta unmute you.
All right. All right, thank you. I apologize for that. Thank you Chair Steenbach and Parks Trails in Lake Commission. I'd like to present, for your consideration, a park, parkland dedication for the Hidden Creek Taylor Farm development. I'd like to kind of run through the staff memo a little bit, to kind of describe again, the, the process in which the Parks Trails Lakes Commission makes a recommendation to city council, who make the final decision on the parkland dedication, and offer some staff recommendations, and then I'd like to take questions also. I see Kelly Jordan and Paul Bruegerman from the project team are also with us on this Zoom meeting. And you'll have them answer questions if, if the commission has any for them, or provide more information if they desire. And I have a health discussion, and maybe we'll come up with a recommendation. I'd like to show, and this, if this is a, if this looks familiar, it's because we did last spring, look at this, this property, also with Mr. Bruegerman. This time his son Nick is also part of the project team. And can you see my screen right now? I'm showing the project.
There you go. Thank you for making it a little bigger.
Yeah, so it's a six acre parcel. It is adjacent to City Water and Sewer. And this is also being reviewed, reviewed by the planning commission tomorrow night. Of course, there's some different components that, that they, through the lens of the zoning code, look at. But the zoning code does specify that at this initial screening, it's really the Parks Trails Lakes Commission takes the first bite of this apple. And what the zoning code does say for parkland dedication is it sets a basic, you know, 10% or of, of land or equivalent market value of the property as a parkland dedication. Since it's something of a, you know, pretty inexact science to determine what that market value is, and in an area that has, you know, lots of wetlands, I think it's something more of a, you know, kind of a collaboration between the developer and the city as far as, you know, what the parkland dedication is for this, and you know, whether it's, you know, in, in this case, probably some combination of both land and improvements upon that land and trails. And, and so, I'll kind of within the context here is the Parks Trails and Lakes map for 2040, which also shown here, shows a regional park about a half mile south. If you can see my cursor, kind of where that blue street ends approximately where, and, and north of the, the curving green future Edwards Parkway line. So in this case, that's why the city, you know, staff so far has been encouraging the dedication of land to promote more community, the more cohesive sense of neighborhood within this area, but also understanding that a much larger dedication would be required south of here. And you're not, you know, as part of that to, to achieve that 2040 goal. Also, you know, let me, part of this is kind of, and within the context is, you'll see here in a moment, kind of where the, the staff is, where they're, so far, this is a conversation with scene engineer and public works and city administrator and Jamie around, how do you, how does one create more of a network of trails that we've already been establishing? And this figure that I'm showing kind of gives you the rough idea of how there's a trail already along at North Side of Edwards Parkway. If we continue with the trail along here, even though there's sidewalk here on this part of Enfield, it does connect to a trail that goes through a dedicated pathway up to 202nd Street, and then again meets another trail, which then goes into, into Fenway Fields. So there's part of a, you know, larger context here. And what the, what the staff has, you know, thought of, and this is, again, this is kind of what, you know, taking our, taking our view of this, and for commission's consideration, I'm also going to show here, kind of, you know, what the, the concept plan has, that has been submitted. Essentially, let me zoom out here a little bit. What we have here is Edwards Parkway to the south, and it's an Enfield roads dubbed ended in the north, and a road network that basically circles a four point nine acre park area with four trails that are proposed within this concept plan to join the, the streets to the, the park area. So we have that here kind of in southeast, we have this other one on the east, and then proposed one in the north, and then proposed one on the west. So that's what the project team has pulled forward. Now, what we see is that in order to connect it better to the north, to the Enfield sidewalk, how about this, this trail be moved over one lot, and so it kind of lines up better with that section of Enfield. Also, to think, thinking about that more regional trail network, if there was another trail easement here, and these are proposed 20 foot wide easement areas for a 10 foot trail, plus five feet on each side for a maintenance, just to be able to get a vehicle in there if needed. And and just provide some, some decent space for that. So this would be another one to the south, but then this would also continue as a trail all the way along here, and then toward the rear of these properties, and then joining up with that Edwards Trail that I mentioned earlier. So in red, you're seeing the proposed trails that are, you know, shifting one, adding one, and then kind of, kind of tying in that, this other, into another network. And of course, this is, you know, when other lots are added, this one would be a connection without any driveways running across it to this, and provide more of a direct route through here. And so what I see is that, you know, some points of discussion for the Parks Trails and Lakes Commission is, you know, do you like the, these, these, this, these trails? Do you like where the city staff is, consider them to be, where the developer is proposing them? What do you think about this kind of Central Park area? What sort of improvements would you like to see in those? In this, you know, in a recommendation to council? And, and is there anything we've missed so far? With that, I'd like to open up the, open up to questions from the, the commission.
So Donovan, this is Doug Ramseth. The trails going through there, do the trail through the park that's proposed, does that, do the, are the trails paved through the park?
Yes, when we say, generally with the, with, with the city staff, when we say trail, we need a 10 foot wide by two minutes trail. Part of that, you know, the city, kind of, you know, and these are all, you know, dedicated upon, you know, a project completion dedicated to the city, kind of the part of that, the bargain is that the city then maintains that. So we're maintaining the asphalt, Public Works is plowing them in the winter. I mean, not on the priority, I mean, streets get plowed first, but they, they are maintained in the winter. And, you know, trails are 10 foot wide by two minutes.
Okay, so, so the trail that shows on the north and the south, they connect with a Batuminus Trail through, all the way through the park?
That, yes, that's, that's what we, that's we've.
All right, thank you.
We're recommending, yeah.
Can you say all the way through the park, it would go through that trail easement section of the picture, and then pick up on between 95 and 96, for example?
Correct. And I'm also imagining that the trail continues through that park space, but we, you know, we didn't want to be too prescriptive. And of course, but this is kind of, you know, this is how we, you know, this is how we see it so far.
Would, see Donovan, Tim Miller here. Would any equipment or anything for the park itself go in that, or would that go back to city?
I mean, I believe part of the park dedication would be some improvements. What that looks like, I think is more in your, your jurisdiction is to, it's, is it the tot lot? Is it a, you know, picnic shelter? You know, that sort of thing, and that's, you know, coordinating also with what, you know, Jamie would like. We're looking for a dog here, excuse me. What is she doing in there? Come on, Amber, hop up. She'll say hi to.
Here, Amber, oh, yes.
Pretty golden.
It's a ninth addition.
Yeah, sorry about that. I didn't realize she was there.
Donovan, you said the trail would go right through the park. Is that going to limit us what we can do with that park space? I mean, are you talking about a paved park, trail right across the parkland?
I think at least one, one paved trail that runs, you know, in that north, in that north-south corridor. And, you know, but that's, that's our idea. I mean, I'm, I'm definitely open to what you all see. I mean, you're, you all that, you know, you are the park experts here. It's just that this, this one really does, you know, be working toward getting a more complete network, and that's what we're, we're seeing next few years is some, some really big trail development. That was a discussion last night at the city council workshop with some of these city, sorry, county reconstructions on 11th Avenue Southwest in Everton. We're going to see, you know, more trails being developed and that network expanding. So this is in that net, kind of within that, that flow.
I guess Betty Guyer. So I do think how adding more trails or connecting what we have really does fit in with our long range planning as well. Right? Are there any issues with where this, where the trails are going? Being newer?
I don't think there's an issue with me. I was just wanting to make sure that we remember what we're going to do with the rest of the,
Yeah.
the land, and certainly connecting parks is, is good for everyone, and yeah, just have to look at what that whole picture looks like.
Yeah, for sure.
I like the way they moved him over to match. What city, city staff did, I, I think was a good idea.
Agreed.
Yeah, so you're still crossing the road, and then you're picking up that short trail across from Enfield that runs around to 202nd Street, right? And then goes east on 202?
Correct.
And then over to Fenway and back around, okay. So Donovan, is, is there an option here to look at only allowing for the trail connection, and then taking funds for the remainder of the money? And the only reason why I ask this, I brought this up back in April, right? We've got Leela over there, we've got Fenway, we've got Eagle Bluff, we've got Summerfield. So we've got, we've got four parks in that area already. And I'm a little bit concerned just in, I don't, I don't know if the rest of you watched the, the budget meeting last night, but there, there's clearly a need for funding for the parks, and there was no, well, I shouldn't say no, I think it was $50,000 or $60,000 investment in the parks infrastructure. So it's, it's clear that the funding at this point isn't going to come from anywhere else other than park dedication fees unless something changes. And we would be foregoing $300,000 here that maybe would pay for a piece of Belts Park or sorry, no, I've got a barking dog.
What is the amount of money that comes in from this development for park development?
Well, there's two, there's 120 lots, right Donovan, and it's still 2,500?
Correct, yeah.
So we would be looking at $300,000 if, if that formula is still accurate. And then if we didn't take this land, would the developer put more homes on this land, which would increase that? Or why, why, what's the logic behind the developer wanting to use this portion of land to, to, in lieu of the park dedication fees?
Well, I think there's, you know, in our discussions, I think the staff has really pushed for the, the park area as kind of that community gathering space. And, but if the, you know, if the park wasn't there, that land wasn't dedicated, yeah, the, the developer, I mean, it's good playground, the developer would put lots there, do reconfiguration, I'm sure he would look at something close, you know, something, I mean, I'm probably, he probably may have already done some concepts of more of a gridded, you know, gridded streets within there. So he'd come forth with another plan, but almost any of these plans would have, you know, some north-south roadway that could, that could all, that could be the, the site of that, that trail that could, you know, be that connective trail that we've discussed.
As we, as you mentioned earlier, the 2040 plan has a park just south of that. So maybe, and as Terry said, we have a number of parks in the vicinity. So maybe having that southern park south of that would, would suffice for that, being close to that community development as well. So I'm coming along with Terry that maybe the, getting the park dedication fees as opposed to land would make more sense.
I will also remind you that that, I mean, this is meant to be more of a neighborhood park, and the one south there is, is kind of more of a regional park, and that could be in that, you know, 15 to 20 acre range, I mean, much, much different. This isn't, as, you know, as far as recreation amenities.
Karen Moorhead, I'm, I'm just thinking of a, it looks like a wonderfully built community, and to me, it just reaches out. So many people today are staying close to home and not wanting their kids to be far enough away, and I, it's not a large area, but I think it could be developed for that community. I don't know, I'd have to go out and walk and see those others, how close they are, but I know I'm just really in favor of having things close to them, and I know it's money, but it's also community and its families, so I'd have to really weigh that back and forth.
Miller, were you going to say something?
Yeah, Donovan, thanks Terry. Donovan, I was just going to ask, I guess I didn't quite understand the answer to Terry's original question. What, what is the impact of, is there, I mean, the trails, are they going to be there regardless of the park dedication fee, you know, or land swap?
Well, we're gonna have, I mean, we're gonna have sidewalks. I mean, that's a standard that, you know, is, you know, is for neighborhoods. The trail piece is kind of a, you know, above that, and what this, this zoning code does allow is, is kind of what Terry's hinting at, you know, some combination of both an improvement and, you know, cash in, in lieu of land. So it's, and you know, it gets, it is a formula for that. It gets a little more complicated because you're talking about what is the equivalent market value, you know, what is the cost of the construction and dedication of that improvement, and, you know, and the land, you know, the easement dedication for the, for the connection, well, if, if there is any kind of extra easement required. So certainly that, that's, that's in the universe of options, is to, to do some, some blended approach.
Because otherwise, there would be, so if you looked at 95, 94, 93, there would be a sidewalk there that would loop all the way around back to Enfield, which would then get you back on that little trail. If we chose not to even do the trail option, right?
Yeah, well, if you recall, I mean, even with the, I think it was a smaller spark, park space with that, I think it was March or April, you saw some version of this. I mean, there was a, a much, there was a more direct north-south road coming from Edwards Parkway up to Enfield. So, I mean, it wouldn't, I can imagine a situation where there'd be, you know, extra, you know, a trail on, on one side of the street. And that, that could serve as that, you know, connection between Edwards Parkway and, and Enfield.
Eddie, were you going to say something?
I just had a question. What kind of housing units were these again? Were these the single level detached towns?
I believe some of, well, it's not, it's not specified. I mean, it's just concept stage. Given the narrowness of the lots, a lot of, there's a minimum, they're 65 feet wide. I wouldn't be surprised if, if they were that, that type of model, and that's something that we've, we're seeing right now, built in the main section of Headwaters 12th, over, you know, over by kind of a little, just a little bit east of here. But yeah, it just, right now, we're just kind of, kind of mapping out the, the street network, general area of lots. You don't see any stormwater ponds here, so those will be added in. So there's, still, still pretty preliminary as far as those kind of details.
Okay, I thought I remembered from the April meeting, that that's what they were. Okay, thank you.
So what's the plan to, is it just going to be grass? What's the, the cost to maintain this, and then also to put equipment onto it? And where does that fall in relation to the priorities and the other things that, again, I'm going to use Belts as an example. We did this huge study on Belts and, and looked at what it would cost to do that. So in essence, we would be buying another piece of land that comes with no funds to put equipment on it or to maintain it, unless there's a strategy to maintain it and to buy equipment for it. That, so is there a strategy along with this proposal that would include the purchasing of equipment and maintenance?
Well, I would, you know, I haven't done the math on it, but I believe that this amount of, you know, parkland dedication, you know, wouldn't add up to that 10% of the land or, or market equivalent, that, you know, that's in the zoning code, and, you know, that table I showed you earlier. So I believe that there are, you know, there are funds that are available for the developer to, you know, place some improvements in there, and that's what I encourage the, you know, the commission to, is to look at what, you know, what would you like to see there? And as far as the maintenance, yes, I mean, that's, that is part of the ongoing thing, and, and that's something I know that, you know, Jamie and Dave Adams wrestle with to make sure they do that right every year. But that's, that's something that, you know, I'd like, I'd like to, you know, engage the commission in right now with the discussion. I mean, what, what do you think? What do you all want to see here?
Well, who's paying for it? Let me just clarify that. I mean, so if, if we put a park here, and it's between, let's say a typical park between 3 and 500,000, are we getting, are we taking this land and the developer is also putting a 3 to $500,000 park on this? Or are we just getting the land, and then we have to work into the existing park budget, equipment and maintenance? Because, and the reason why I keep asking this question is because we're struggling to get dollars to maintain our existing parks and green space. So are we adding another burden on top of this that we don't have any funds to maintain or do anything with?
Well, no, I mean, yeah, I'd like to be clear that I think that as part of the parkland dedication requirements, some improvements, you know, would be part of this. And the developer would build those and then dedicate them to the city. It wouldn't be in the range of a 300,000 to 500,000 dollar Belts Park type improvement. But it would be something that I think would, you know, just even have the space there is, is an amenity. And in some case, in some ways, I think also, this, this is what kind of stamps this is a neighborhood that, that is more than just a collection of lots for people coming to Forest Lake saying, you know, this is something unique here. I think this, there's a part of that, that is an amenity that attracts people to the community. And I don't mean to, you know, discount your concerns, and I understand that, you know, the, you know, that, that funding for new improvements isn't there. I mean, I'm trying to, trying to get you more apartment buildings built, and, you know, having, probably see a,
It's not, funding comes outside of just park dedication fees, right?
Yeah, yeah, what I'm trying to,
It's part of the strategic plan, and it's an important investment. Funding comes from other places. And when we can't even make the 10-year strategic plan as a placeholder, it makes me question whether or not we're going to have any money to, it's going to be grass. And does grass draw people? I assume grass drives up the value of 86, 87, 88, 89 to, to sell those because it's open area behind them, but I, I would get off my soapbox now, but that is my major concern here is that we can't, we have a list of parks that we're trying to maintain and upgrade now that we can't afford to do. And now we're going to add an additional space to maintain and upgrade that we don't have funds to maintain and upgrade long term. And no guarantee that we're going to get funds. So are we going to rob Peter to pay Paul here again, is my only concern.
Terry, I'll get on my soap, soapbox and off of it quite quickly too, because I still look at it as a community that would really draw people and families, and would be part of the entire development's long-range look. I don't anticipate putting a large-scale park development right there, but I think having green space gives us a little room to think of some things that we would still have a community park there. And so, you know, I, you have to look at the dollars for sure, but when you get park dedication dollars, I like to think that we put them back into the development somewhat, that I know when I was on the park, but before, we couldn't take that money and then put it into Belts, because it was to be used in the development agreements. So I don't know how that all washes out, but my thought is, I'm still more for a community park than, than not. I don't know how big that space is. That might help me too. That might help me too. Doesn't appear that it's very big.
Excuse me, this is Paul Bruggerman. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for your time. We appreciate this opportunity to talk to you guys. Just to give you a little background on who we are, we did the Summer Fields development. If you're familiar with that in the park and how that all laid out as one large park, just kind of backing up ten thousand feet, talking with the staff, figuring out, you know, do you want a larger park like that in the middle of this development, like Summer Fields? Or do you want more of these, you know, potlot, pocket lots, parks? But this is almost five acres and our net buildable acres here is about forty acres. So we're actually, if we're talking about the ordinance and where we fit in there, we're actually, the land that's shown on here is more than what is required. So back to the question of funding for the improvements, I I, you know, just unless there's something I'm misunderstanding, I don't think there are funds in this. Personally, if you if you've been in Summerfield, the park is kind of the main focal point of the whole neighborhood. Everybody drives by it on both main intersections or travel roads in there or driveway or, you know, main roads in there. That's kind of what I like to do. But I also understand that there are some needs for some smaller pocket lots, especially for younger families with little kids, you know, closer to their homes. And we're certainly open to do or work with the city any way that you guys, you know, want us to. But I guess that that's just my feedback on it. And I don't know how much further south Donovan, that regional park is. But if you're, if that's gonna be on this, is it outside of the hundred and twenty-ish acres that I'm developing? The other two pieces south, is it, so it's south of there even more?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, okay. So then, so then I'm assuming those next phases that we will go through will be a park fee that would contribute to that and its improvements?
I mean, of course, that will, with, you know, succeeding developments will probably have this similar conversation again with the Park Commission around what, you know, what's what's most appropriate. So I mean, I can't predict that, whether, you know, what it'll be land or or fee in lieu of.
Okay, it may be, it maybe a smaller park with some totlot improvements in this location would be more desirable than, because it, I mean, five acres is, in my mind, is a is a big piece of open land. Maybe it isn't in the world of a park, but to me, I mean, it seems like a big park, five acres. I mean, considering that most lots are a third of an acre, this is.
Yeah, I think Paul Timmiller here. I think part of the bigger thing here isn't, I mean, we can all agree that it'd be great in these developments, much to Karen's point, to have these parks. And our issue as a commission is that we don't have the funds, as Terry said, to pay for them. So if there's not improvement, five acres is, it's a big space of land. You know, and if we can't do anything with those. So I agree that, to your point, it is a nice big space of land and in these new communities, you know, really benefit from having them, but unfortunately, from our standpoint, the budgets don't.
Yeah, so that maybe Terry compromises to do a smaller park. Again, I call it a totlot, you know, more for the younger kids to play and hang around with with smaller equipment and have the equipment and the park as part of this development. Again, you know, it's up to you guys and Donovan, of course, and how you want to go forward, but I'm just, I'm agreeing, I guess it's with Terry that it's like, okay, we've got all this land, but in my mind, there isn't money to do anything with all this land in our development unless I'm misunderstanding something, and I guess I would need direction from Donovan on that.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I mean, I think it's, you know, I haven't done the math on it. What I'm, you know, and I think when you look at, you know, I calculated four point nine acres for that central area. Part of my, part of my thought around that is, you know, so there can be some portion of that that's gonna be stormwater ponding and just kind of given where else it's gonna go. You know, and so, you know, that's kind of where, you know, that would be taken out of that four point nine. So that's, that's, I mean, Paul, you end up might be, you maybe end up being right on that. But it's just, which one explain a little bit more of my reasoning around the idea that there's gonna be, you know, some more, at least some money for improvements or, you know, or trails as well.
Yeah, and again, that's kind of the highest point of the of the neighborhood. If we were gonna do something with a park in combination with ponding, I think it'd be, and I, you know, I certainly like having a pond associated with the park just because it allows or makes it feel more open and more open space. But it may be to the southern area or the south piece. But again, you know, we want to work with you guys and make this a great neighborhood. So and again, we appreciate your time and we, you know, I encourage the feedback, and I guess I'm hoping that's what, just open dialogue to figure out what the best thing to do for everybody.
Appreciate that, Paul.
Yeah, thank you. Donovan, how big is the stormwater ponds going to be? Because it's already the the north side of that is already pretty swampy. And you've got the, I used to live right on that, I don't know, swamp is what we called it. So I don't know what the technical name is, but you're already kind of swampy on that north side. So how much more of this parkland would be out of that four point nine acres? How much of it would be additional water, wetland?
We're really at the beginning, you know, that's engineering question, and that's, we're really at the preliminary point. What what my thought is around this, and this is kind of getting more into you just subdivision design, is that, you know, on those outer edges, you know, there's like, like Paul says, I mean, there's something like twenty acres of wetlands, you know, with the kind of the area that's kind of the hatched area. If you, I could bring it back up, but maybe I'll do that so you can kind of see what I'm talking about. Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't design these, but I'm thinking that maybe on the eastern side, it's the way the land's sloping would be, there'd be a portion of that, but I really have no, no idea of what kind of acreage that would be.
Any of the other commissioners see any kind of compromise on a smaller area? Or not?
Well, before we, I just have Commissioner Steamblock, who's not here tonight. He did email me just some comments on this one that I said I would read and share with the commission in his absence. So he said, I'm not able to attend our meeting tonight, but I'd like to speak on the parkland dedication. I am not in favor of taking the land. At our former meetings, we talked about the land with Patrick, and we cannot afford it. We cannot revitalize our existing parks with the funds we have now. Looking at the diagram and reading the staff notes, the parkland would be somewhat of a drainage area in that park. When a development is in the process, it seems like we're getting the piece of land that's not average. On a separate note, we, the city have to come up with some funding ideas. Example, putting on a sales attacks on real estate, whether buying or selling. And the Parks, Trails and Lakes just finished paying off a million-dollar Fenway project. So he's more in favor of taking the funds. So thanks for listening. So that's just passed on from Commissioner Steamblock, who's not here. So, but I know Karen, you had mentioned your comment was if there's a conversation to go into compromise or talk about some revisions to this existing plan, is that what you're?
Correct, I just, you know, realizing that maybe there's a middle ground here for something, but I didn't know what they're they're, the ones that are here, what they would think.
Go ahead, Betty.
So the only other thing I thought of, and I don't, maybe it's a lose-lose, I don't know, is taking the land but leaving it green space, because there's some value to making sure we've got good green space in our community as well. That does then, then we don't get the funds that would help. But the maintenance would be much less too. We wouldn't be putting, but I don't know if that provides the value to the neighborhood either. So it was just another thought. I don't know that it's got a whole lot of upside.
I think it's a good thought to have some green space also, but a smaller park and some green space. I mean, I don't know what the numbers turn out to be, but I see something of value with taking part of it for a part of, for some kind of a park.
I don't necessarily disagree with that, Karen. I don't know, do we have that? Are we able to make that decision today based on the information we have? That's my concern.
Right. Could we get a new updated drawing that shows actually what this would look like with with the ponding built in here? And so really give us an idea of what we would be acquiring here and what that would look like?
I think I hear a couple of things, just listening, listening and taking notes to the conversation. You know, going to the initial part of the conversation, the trail connections, I think that's really favorable to all commissioners, seemed pretty much in consensus with that piece is very desirable to have that connection with the other existing trails. So I think that's something that we're really interested in based on this conversation. And then it seems like we just need a little, maybe some more information on if we went with this five acres, you know, how much of that would be the storm ponding, stormwater ponds? And if or what other amenities? Would there be included, if any? And if, you know, if there's some developer cost to contributing to the equipment for the park? And then it also sounds like maybe looking at kind of a compromise, maybe a slightly smaller parkland to service that neighborhood, but maybe something that would allow for the developers' funds to help put something there so that it's almost a completed project. The city would then assume maintenance, so mowing any repairs and maintenance to equipment or whatever we might have in there. Because then it's not something that we're just waiting on funds, we have a completed project. Does that seem like what you guys are looking for, maybe like another alternative option where it can almost be a complete project if we do a park there?
Or leaving it, like Betty said, with green space and then maybe working in a trail piece there or something too? Could we get some? Like, what would that look like? And i-if if we did a smaller amount of either land or we, I know Donovan, you said that calculation is a little bit more complicated, but is there a little of both option? I don't know.
This is Doug. I don't know that holding ponds are a park. So getting unbuildable land that's neither suitable for putting park equipment on is really what we would have in mind. I think having green space there with ponds is fine if the developer wanted to do that. I don't know taking it as parkland in lieu of the payment seems, seems to me where we are acquiring cash drain in form of a new park that we don't have money for. And there's nobody else who's going to put any park equipment, a gazebo, picnic tables, a couple of swings, whatever for the totlot. So leaving it as green space can be the developer's decision. The trails are great, but I don't, you know, if you can't afford to to use it or treat it as a park, why would we take the land?
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, Donovan, but I believe what you said, the formula would take in count is that those storm drain areas would not count towards the park dedication.
Is that correct? Yeah, it's correct. They just, I mean, they would be essentially more open space and, you know, they could be adjacent to the park. So it kind of, it was an apparent increase in the park size, but no, they wouldn't be officially part of the park.
So I think with, and to your comment earlier, you hadn't hadn't done the actual calculation or the math. I think that's certainly something we would want to look at is what is the calculation? What are we gonna, you know, yet, and is there an opportunity to do some sort of split, whether it's you know, more of the trail piece, a more completed park versus just open space, you know? Or whether it's money and land, you know, and some sort of land combination. So I think that would be, from my opinion, that's what, you know, I would like to see more information on.
And when you say calculation, are you saying calculation of the land and what the revenue would be? Or what are, what are we calculating?
No, I'm saying, from what I'm hearing, maybe I heard wrong, but that there when you take, you know, what that calculation of overall acreage, you said four point nine acres, but then now some of that's gonna actually not be part of the park. So then you have that, and what's that value with that calculation of value? And what what is the dedication versus how much land and then improvements that we could have? You know what I'm saying?
So the calculation would be the value of the land that we would, we would get? Is that, I'm missing it?
No, what? If we're gonna take some land, some cash, that calculation, what that, what that?
Jamie, from my opinion, when you summed it up, that's exactly what I was thinking. So I would be in favor of the notes that you took.
Yeah, I think, I'm just trying to do my screen share really fast here. So Donovan, I think what they're getting confused on maybe a little bit is just here where they're used to the calculation of twenty-five hundred dollars per unit for the park dedication fee, if that's something that taking the cash. But I think that there can maybe not as familiar with this piece here with the ten percent of the land or equivalent market value. Is that the calculation you're referring to? And Donovan referring to that this wasn't quite that ten percent?
Certainly.
Right, right. I mean, I think Paul, you know, I was, I mean, I think Paul, you know, Bruggerman, the developer here, I mean, he may be, you know, he may be correct that in the end it what we're talking about is is just land. And with, with, and, you know, with, I would say with trails also, but the you know, but that's, that's, you know, that is, that's one option. I mean, I guess you could, you know, basically, it's it's three, three, three buckets here. I mean, one is simply the land dedication, and that's the, you know, the ten percent. There is land plus improvements or it's simply fee in lieu of. And that's kind of, in a large sense, that's what the 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 commission's role here is to decide which which bucket are you pulling out of? And it seems like the way the conversation's going, you're kind of, you want to kind of pull from the middle one, you know, the some land dedication plus improvements. And maybe I'm thinking of, you know, trying to provide some some feedback to Paul here and Kelly Jordan, the surveyor, who's also part of the call.
Donovan, can I just jump in here real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Do you, could you put your plan back up that you originally started with?
Yeah.
And here's just an idea, and it's, and it'd be similar to the Summerfield, but where the Headwater Parkway comes in and makes its the very lowest right portion. First of all, let me, I want to say something. Where this park is shown is the highest best land that we have in the development in this, this site. It's not low, swampy, unbuildable, not good. It's great. Okay? So I don't, someone made the comment that you didn't want, you know, not good land. This is great land as far as this neighborhood is concerned. But if you go down to the very lower right where the our, our road dies into the Headwater Parkway, would you, that's, that's kind of a central portion, if you will, of the the hundred and twenty-ish to a hundred and to two hundred acres that we're looking at developing on this, this whole area of putting in a park across on the south side of Headwaters Parkway, that would be land improvement, a combination for this whole area. Maybe it's five acres of land with X amount of dollars of improvements and it's completed. And it would be a central located park in our development. It's, you know, I think it it shows better and it's more accessible to everybody if it's on the main road. Again, it's kind of similar like we did in Summerfields. You know, if you ever drive through there, you know, there's a huge park. I don't know, is would, is that something that you guys would? I don't know, is, would, is that something that you guys would be receptive to?
So are you saying that would be part of a, a next development or?
Yeah, a next phase. So we're moving from here and then we're moving down south to the next forty, which is to the, the left of our, you know, a most straight south of this development. And then the next phase would be moving to the east to that next forty.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So where that, where Headwaters Parkway curves there, that's kind of the triangle of, of three forty acres, if you will. The one that we're looking at right now, the one that's south, that is undeveloped where the, you know, the two roads go down and they dead end in, into nothing, that's another forty. And then just to the right or to the east of there is another forty acres. And so what I'm saying is maybe, so you're not just park and you're not just money. Maybe we put in a developed park, in my opinion, would be kind of in the central area of our development, but it would be a complete park. And then we would develop this park, we would put homes in it, in this phase. So, you know, we pay our park dedication fee, but then when we come back and develop the park that is um, you know, and that's southeast curve, if you will, we would take that money and put it into those improvements.
So you're saying the next developments would be money to put into that improvement, which would improve the entire area?
Correct.
Into the improvement of the new, the next development, right?
Oh, so, I don't know how I can, maybe you can help me Donovan. Let's just call this, it's, it's gross of sixty acres, but there's a lot of wetlands. So it's about a forty acre buildable that is in yellow to you. Okay, if you move straight down to the bottom of that page, there's another forty acres there.
Yeah, we just
And then if you move
You know, here.
Perfect. So you go straight down, it says future residential, that's roughly another forty acres. And then to the right, see where it says future development? So what I'm saying is where Headwaters Parkway is coming in and it makes a curve to the south there or to the right, or you know, as you're heading west, put, yeah, right there, put a approximately a five acre park with improvements. Donovan, can you move your cursor up? Yeah, right in that bend of the corner, right there. Right. Yep, right where he has roughly put a five acre park in there with improvements as part of these three parcels once, as, as they're developed. Or, yeah, I guess that's what, that would be my preference, yes.
And with improvements would be money that would be used for all, the park for all of the sections, all of the proposed and the future development.
Well, it would be the park dedication fees that were generated from these homes that would be put into the improvements um, above and beyond the land in that area.
Right. I think there's lots to think about yet.
Would we be able to, okay, I'm just going back to the other area. I think one of the things we find ourselves in right now is we've got all these kind of hodgepodge's of little pieces of land, some not little. We can't sell them and we struggle to develop them. Would this be land if we were thinking ten, fifteen down, years down the road and wanted to shed it? Is it sellable land? Is it, is there value? Would this be something that somebody would wanna purchase? Or would it be difficult to sell because there would be a drainage pond somewhere on it or?
Well, it looks landmark too by the
I think the question is if it's dedicated parkland, forevered parkland.
I don't think you can, as far as, you can ask Donovan, but I don't think the city can take, once it's dedicated parkland and then sell it. I don't know that. That's out of my wheelhouse.
I don't think you can.
But, but we have land that, I don't know. Okay. So Donovan, when you kind of get Jamie's list, can you also get, if there was a hundred and hundred and twenty lots there, which is what it is now, that would be three hundred thousand dollars. If we forego that land, how many more additional homes would be there and what would be the, the new revenue as well that we would be foregoing when you do the other calculations?
I can, yeah, I can get you that number. Um, you know, and this is all really preliminary. It, um, because, you know, it's just, it's just a concept, but uh, certainly that's, that's possible. Um, and we, you know, do have a meeting later this week with the project team to kind of, you know, chart some next steps. And maybe at that time I'll even, you know, have, you know, they'll, they'll produce something that um, or even have something in their back pocket of, you know, where, where they've thought, you know, it seems like, you know, Paul's, you know, is a very experienced developer and they've probably gone through a few iterations of this plan. Where, you know, we can get you, but yeah, we can get you that number.
It would be nice to see, like I said, with the, the, kind of going back to Doug's point, where this drainage pond's gonna go and what is actually usable there and what that drawing looks like as well. It's kind of like when we did that swap for the wooded area down by the library, we said, you know, we said you gotta leave the trees, number one. Number two, we didn't wanna swap it for the swampland around the corner. I just wanna make sure that we're not getting a how, what is actually usable here?
Yeah, um, yeah, and I, I am, and I don't mean to design their project for them. It's just, it's something that uh, the city engineer had mentioned that the, you know, and I'm just going from my experience of looking at the land, how it sloped, it would seem like it's gonna be a lot of stormwater that's gonna be um running to the east. And uh, yeah, I could either put it in a pipe or put it, you know, into a stormwater management facility. So that's my idea. I don't, you know, I'm kind of getting out of my expertise there. Um, but uh, but also just in regards to what Paul just said, I mean, if there isn't a park, any kind of parkland dedicated here and just with the idea that there's a, a future park um, in a future phase. Um, and there, I mean, there is, and this is not meant any kind of slight against Paul as a developer, but you know, markets change and there, but there's no guarantee that, that park will come forward. Um, just for a whole host of reasons, but uh, just understand that, that um, um, except, you know, once you, the, the city doesn't get the land, that it's gone.
I've, I have a question uh, for either Mr. Brugman or for you Donovan. Just how, how many acres is the Summerfield Park? Do you know? Because it's huge.
Yeah, Paul, do you know?
Well, I, I think it's about a fifteen acre park.
Yeah, okay, so.
But if, even if you had a third of that, that's still a huge park.
Yeah.
You know, five acres is still a good sized piece of land, but.
Yeah, I was just wondering what Summerfield, because I know that's a, that's a, that is a huge park, so.
And again, from, from a developer's viewpoint, I like it that it's a central part of the neighborhood, that everybody can see it and it's a gathering area that, that's not tucked behind a row of houses. That's why, you know, I'm proposing that we maybe put it somewhere that it's visible, visible from everybody, you know? On that curve. And back to the question, I would still pay the park dedication fee on the lots and wouldn't, I guess, I don't know if recoup is the right or get that money until we were doing this development uh, and putting the park in. So you, the city would get the money and hold the money until we come to do the improvements on that parkland. Does that make sense?
And I'll, I'll just add the um, the, that Summerfield's park is ten point seven acres.
Yeah, so that, so half of that is still a huge park.
And of course, that one does have a stormwater pond on, on that southern part of it too.
Yeah, it's a pretty small pond, but yeah, you're right. And I don't, you know, again, I, as far as I know, the ponding area doesn't, isn't part of the calculation for the park area. That's gotta be X outside of that. So if we had a ten acre park, a pond, we couldn't use that as our park dedication. We'd have to have ten acres of land besides. So the park isn't a, or the wet, or the ponding area isn't a, a reduction in our parkland requirement.
Right.
As far as I know. To me, it adds, it adds to it because it gives more space, you know, more open area around the park.
So just a quick question or point of clarification. Um, with the current development and concept brought forward tonight, if we would forego the current proposal with the park um, parkland, the five acres, you're suggesting one option is to pay the park dedication fee for that development and which would include a hundred and twenty plus um residential units. And then you're suggesting we could look at having the parkland, five acres be um, off of Headwaters Parkway where the curve is, so that that would essentially service like all three of your developments once they happen. Is that correct?
Yeah, and then we would use that money that we paid on the, the park dedication fees paid, that we would be able to put those, that money into that five acres and improve it.
Okay, so one follow-up question then is for the potential new location on the headwa, you know, the curve of Headwaters Parkway, and if that's the five acres, when would that be dedicated then to the city? Would that be with that second, that next phase of forty additional? Or is that something that could be dedicated sooner that?
No, it would be, it would be dedicated as we do that phase, but keep in mind, you're getting all the funds. So if I don't, even if I never, that's just like Donovan said, the market changes, right? If the world implodes and everybody stops building houses and, and I get hit by a bus tomorrow or whatever, you still get the park dedication fee. Right? So the, the plan would be, let's just say everything moves forward. We develop this over the next six years or whatever it is, is, you know, that would be our plan to have uh, not a regional park, but a kind of a nicer neighborhood park that would serve not only our hundred and twenty-ish acres, but also the, the developed eight land that was already developed and the homes are existing that are right in that same quadrant, if you will. And I guess I don't
I'm not understanding. So if you gave us three hundred thousand dollars, just using that as the scenario right now, we would hold that and then give it back to you to build the park, so.
Do the actual improvements in the park to actually, to build the improvements of the park.
So essentially it would be you're just moving the money, you would be the contractor basically building the park that we would pay somebody else to build the park for. Is that right?
No, just, it would be no different than
Understanding.
Well, let's just say I was developing this five acre park and putting in the improvements. I would be doing that as part of my development, correct? If we were only doing this one piece and the park board said, you know what, we want a park right here, but we want it developed. Okay, well, it doesn't work. So let's say we make it a three acre park and there's X amount of dollars left. I would make those improvements, just like I did in Summerfields. Right? I put in the trail, I put in the playground equipment, I put in the trees, I put in the benches, whatever, all the, the improvements. I would do the same thing in my mind in a, on a better, more central location in the center of our neighborhoods rather than in one little corner lot. And yes, and then I would get that money to attribute back, maybe the improvements, let's just say we give you three hundred thousand on this phase that we're developing right now. Well, maybe the improvements are a hundred and fifty thousand, so you only give me half of the money back. I mean, yeah, you're not gonna give me money back. I mean, I guess I'm not, I, I don't know that you'd give me money back that I, I, I don't know Donovan, how does that work?
So I guess I can, I can take that one if you want Donovan, with the, how that works, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So I think I'm understanding it as Terry, he would pay the park dedication fees for this project. We would forego green space. We would take the cash. That essentially we would wait until the next phase. So that neighborhood development would, would be without their neighborhood park until phase two went into place, which could be however many years down the road. And Donovan said things could change, so that development could or could not happen, right? I mean, that's, we don't know and would change. So we would have the money, the three hundred thousand dollars regardless. Essentially that would then be available for that park improvement when that phase happens. And if it didn't, we still would have the three hundred thousand dollars, but then that neighborhood would, would be without a neighborhood park.
Right, and it would forego us money somewhere else. Which we've done in the past, right? Because that's how we paid off Fenway was through park dedicate. So we use park dedication funds in places other than where the development is occurring, because without them, we have no funding to do our other park enhancements and.
Yeah, and I think, so I think that's just a
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that, that's all.
Does that clarify it? John, are you following?
Mm-hmm, I get it. Yep.
Options, okay.
Yep.
So I think we need some more information and another version to look at with this new concept. And I think, you know, Parks Commission's kind of leaning towards one thought of you either, like Donovan said, land and improvements in the existing areas. Do you have the guarantee of a neighborhood park? But you want it finished. So looking at a three or four acre park with some improvements. So what, what are those cost breakdowns to potentially have a completed park? Or as Mr. Brugman mentioned, maybe it's a second option of relocating that five acres for the next development and taking cash for this current project. Seems like that's where we've narrowed it down to. Obviously, the third option is keeping it as is, a five acre parcel, and that's really all we would get, is the green space. So I think we've kind of identified three options.
Or a fourth option would be taking the cash and not doing any development.
Correct. Okay. Correct. So I think we have some options and it seems like still some questions and a little more um, information as a follow-up would be appropriate before we make some decisions. Does that seem fair from commissioners?
Can I ask, can I ask one more question?
Sure, absolutely.
If we were developing all hundred and twenty acres of this site, do you think the location that I'm proposing would be a good location for a park for this neighborhood?
The second one you proposed?
Yeah, on the end, yeah, we're the one that, yeah, yes.
Just from my opinion, that one's a little bit more palatable because it's further out and out, further away from the other parks that we have and it would connect with, once that's developed, it would make it once you develop the other side of that, it would make it more accessible. Um, but that's that's just my opinion.
I agree with you Terry. I think that lo, that location is better than the one that's in the, you know, the
Well, I mean, just, is that?
Yeah, no, I think you're going in the right direction there, Paul, on that. I think it, you know, it can work. Everyone's benefit here too, being that uh, we get some more information on what the total number of lots will be and what all the numbers are.
You know, it came from ten thousand feet, I can add, I mean, it's gonna be roughly three hundred lots, plus or minus.
In the phase one, if you would remove that?
On all three of those.
Got it, okay.
I just call them forty acres. I mean, the one is a sixty, but it's roughly forty buildable. So roughly on, on all hundred and twenty acres, it's roughly three hundred lots. You know, I mean, we don't know until we get street layouts, ponding and all that stuff figured in, but um, you know, it could be two eighty, maybe it could be three twenty. We don't know exactly at this point, but somewhere in that area.
Mr. Brugman is a hundred ninetieth, the southern boundary of your hundred and twenty acres?
I don't believe so Donovan.
Wouldn't it be north of that?
No, it's not, no.
I'm a, a forty or eighty north of that.
Okay.
It's an eighty actually.
Yeah, I'm an eighty north of that.
All right, so that, having that park, um, the neighborhood park would not interfere with having the regional park called for in the twenty forty plan?
No.
Right, I think this would still be more of a neighborhood park, not a regional park.
Right.
But it'd be centrally located in our neighborhood, if you will.
I appreciate Jamie, if you would come back with the three or maybe four suggestions that you had, so we can all get on the same page.
One benefit I see to that last option, the larger park that services all of those, although I know things are still up in the air, right? We don't know when those developments will happen, is that we may then end up with one park to maintain ongoing. Otherwise, what I see happening is a request for three small parks.
Yeah.
Great, great point.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think that's important to note because I feel like the current proposal is very much neighborhood park servicing that direct neighborhood. But as you look at the, you know, as we talk about the other two phases of this, this new low proposed location could be more beneficial and accessible from all three of those phases.
And they did a wonderful job with Summerfield, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I do want to, I got one last comment on it all. I don't want to lose sight of the the trail piece, though. It did, you know, looking at that first right away, Donovan, when you showed it, you know, I was excited by it because of the trail piece. So I don't want to lose sight of that either.
And I think it's definitely, you know, nothing that you've discussed tonight, you know, eliminates that.
Great.
All right, so I can work with Donovan. We can work on some of these follow up items. Timing wise, I know we're planning on having our December regular meeting, so I don't know if we can reconvene for that, if that works for you, Donovan, and your process with this.
Yeah.
Looks like our next regular meeting, we'd have December 15th, which is Tuesday, December 15th.
So that that works.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to the December 15th meeting with the three or four items we talked about, and we can see if that helps kind of move things along to the next steps.
Mr. Brueggemann, thank you for being here and thank you for being willing to listen to my and our questions.
I'm glad to appreciate your time. So thank you.
We appreciate it.
You know, we worked through this. I think at the end of the day, we'll get, I really liked the way Summerfield's turned out with the with the park. Is exposed, and I guess I'm hoping we can go that direction, but I know that you guys have, at the end of the day, have the final say in it. So.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Definitely appreciate that, Mr. Brueggemann, and I know that it's important to have this piece considered. And I know, like, we've had a lot of really good feedback about Summerfield and really want to just have it be a good neighborhood park, like you mentioned. So I think we're all on the same page with striving for that goal. So.
Perfect. We'll try to put a sketch together, maybe that can show something, an area at least of about five acres in that for that meeting.
Thank you.
And Paul, just, you know, there was a one thought, I mean, there's a thought that perhaps you could do some ghost plating of those those of those two, those other two forties, and that would actually kind of fit in with what, you know, a potential park in that area as well.
Okay. Just, yeah, okay. Sounds good. Well, thanks again for your time, folks. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So commissioners, we do have this as a regular agenda item, so we probably would need a mo- we would need a motion to table to the December 15th, table recommendation to the December 15th meeting.
移到
A second.
Oh, that's me, isn't it?
That's you.
I was waiting for you to roll call. Sorry. So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, you want to roll call it?
Yes, Terry Steenblock.
Aye.
Tim Miller. Doug Ramseth.
Aye.
Karen Moorhead.
Aye.
Betty Guyer.
Betty, you're on mute.
Aye, sorry. Grandkids here, so trying to keep the discussions to a minimum.
I know that.
All right. Thank you, Donovan.
Thank you, Donovan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, so we are on to Castlewood 2020.
Right, so now we're moving into discussion items that don't require any action. So we'll work through these fairly quickly. I just want to keep conversation going and keep some next steps happening. So tonight's talk about Castlewood Golf Course 2020 review. I'm just going to walk you through a recent recap that we received from Forsome Golf Management, who we currently have a one year contract with to operate Castlewood Golf Course. So just a quick recap, you know, we entered into an agreement with them end of March of this year, hit the global pandemic and opened the courses as soon as we were able to. All in all, it was a smooth transition, and I think overall, we've had a, we retained a lot of former golfers. We acquired some new golfers. And with that, I think it's been, you know, a successful year. In our contract, we do have language in there that the operator, which is Forsome Golf Management, is guaranteed a an annual profit of $50,000. So if the net profit from the operations does not meet the $50,000 threshold, then the city would reimburse the manager for the difference. So right now through November, right now, we're looking at about a $30,000 net profit on the golf course. So a couple of things to note with that, there are still some expenses we should see coming through in December. So those are, the final reconciliation is not complete. And so we'll have that once we're able to close out the books for the year. So again, right now, we're looking at a net profit of about $30,000. It could, you know, it could end up being, you know, 25,000, somewhere in that range where the city would then, you know, have to pay the difference to the manager. So I did want to note a couple of things with this. This year, the, to start the operations with a new operator, there was an expense of about $25,000 in new equipment, which is kind of a, an outlier, one time expense. And next year, that would be projected at only like five to $7,000, so a significant decrease in that cost. This year, repair and maintenance for the equipment was about $4,500. Next year, that might kind of double to $10,000, just because this year they didn't really service the equipment they purchased. It was ready to go. So there will be some repairs and tuning up of the equipment for next year. So all in all, our kind of upfront costs for equipment this year was close to $30,000. And next year, we're going to see half of that cost, so probably about $15,000. So those are some of the the notable, you know, kind of one time startup costs for this year. And also, we're hoping to project that revenue will be increased for 2021. We had a lot of momentum with the golf this year, a lot of people golfing because of COVID-19, because you can do it safely. And with the addition of the clubhouse and having the liquor license right out at the beginning of the season versus midsummer, we hope to have some additional revenue there. So. So I just wanted to at least kind of talk about this tonight, kind of some thoughts on how, from what your experience was with the golf course, given some of this information tonight. Ultimately, we really need to start thinking about and discuss if we're going to move forward in a new contract with Forsome Golf Management, and if not, what alternatives are. But just a reminder that as we started this process earlier this year, you know, last year, the net profit was about $14,000. We had a really difficult, we had no responses to an RFP. You know, and just a lot of challenges there. So I do feel, you know, optimistic that the net profit or revenue was higher, given the, you know, upfront costs and expense that we had. And just for discussion tonight as well, if we do think about a new contract with Forsome Golf Management, thinking about the term of that contract, I know a one year contract was appropriate for this year, but considering a three or five year contract, they can secure staffing better that way. We are setting up a more sustainable operation. And just one last note is if this this parkland or this golf course is forever parkland. So it's either a golf course or it's some other parkland. And if we don't have somebody operating it like we do with Forsome Golf Management, you know, even if our annual investments anywhere from 15 to $25,000, you'd have to consider what our costs would be if we were solely operating or maintaining something there. So a lot of information, happy to talk through it tonight and ultimately just looking for an open discussion. You know, if we want to start contract discussions with Forsome Golf, that would be, now would be a good time to start thinking about that. So we aren't in a situation like we were earlier this year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, just open discussion tonight on any feedback from this year and thinking ahead to 2021 and beyond. So with that, do you have any questions?
Well, given our experience last year in trying to find someone who is willing to run the golf course, I don't know that there are many alternatives available to us. So do you see with with COVID and the increased golfing that we've seen? I don't know. I thi- I think that there, I don't know that there'd be more people interested in running a golf course than there were last year. So we're probably be a best situation to get a a three year contract, I would think, something of that nature.
Could you do a three year contract with the ability to renew for two additional, for the flexibility?
Yeah, we can. There's certainly options to have the option to renew after however many years. So I think, you know, if if we're three years is good, we can talk to Forsome Golf about that. See, you know, we would go into the contract negotiations if we're interested in working with them again. I can't say enough good things about their operation, their reporting professionalism, and really have done a lot with the website and social media. And I feel like, you know, and just in year one, in a crazy time, hitting the ground running, you know, they came in and started up operations very quickly and efficiently. So I feel like there is an opportunity to do some more targeted market research and outreach to hit certain groups, to drive up new customers and retain and continue to build on that base of people coming to the course. So, so, you know, I think like to Doug's point of our, how many other people out there are even an option? And so, I mean, I've said, there's a great things about it. I think just the conversation, knowing that they do have the, you know, guaranteeing that annual profit of what was currently in our contract of $50,000. And again, I haven't discussed contracts with them, so I'm assuming that would be about the same. But ultimately, looking to see if we start negotiating some new contract terms with them.
You know, this was a very emotional thing that happened with this guy. The the whole thing was very emotional, and I think they handled it very well. I think the fact that we saw more compliments and kudos about the golf course on social media and other platforms versus complaints, because this was a pretty significant change and and shift for the community. I think that that says a lot about them. I feel like there was more transparency when we asked for reporting information. It was immediately and readily available, which was, which gives me comfort to be able to have access to the numbers if we need them. And I I think it went, I think it went really well. And to Doug's point, I'm I'm not sure if we would find anybody better. And and at least this year, they proved themselves as well, I think.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think looking at another tur- you know, another three year deal with them with, like Terry said, the option, you know, hopefully on our end would be to add a couple more years would be a great idea.
I agree too, and and certainly I always have heard Castlewood was built up with the previous manager. And that's what made it kind of an emotional, because a lot of people in the community really, really liked the golf course, the way it was run. Now, I don't know where the reporting back to the city part, but as far as the community members, that was a good job. I think I've heard just as many, maybe even better, because they took off at a, they took over at a very hard time and and did a good job. They also have a lot more benefits with the contract that we gave them. And I hope, you know, they would appreciate that, the the new clubhouse, with the ability to have more amenities there and their experience, their 50,000 guaranteed. You know, I don't see, I don't see a problem with three years because I think they proved themselves for the first year. But I would like it to be three with an option, not to go to five right away. And yeah. I also, you know, I think we have to at some time talk about the communication between the golf course, the management, the parking lot, and the neighbor next door, Stella's, I think, to keep open conversation with them would be in everybody's best benefit.
Thanks, Karen. Yeah, I think that all sounds, any other comments on on any of this? I just had one more thought too, as I know, as we are talking about our park planning and our goals and objectives, you know, I know obviously access and developing a sustainable operation, ones that can eventually hopefully be self sustaining and potentially generate revenue. And, you know, I think in one year, happy to see the numbers. I know there was some startup costs. I think to have something truly be profitable, to give them a year or two is a, you know, is reasonable. It's going to take a little bit of investments and startup and getting transferred over. We did have the contract language, and I think this would remain that if the profit, if the net profit ever exceeds the $50,000 annually, the manager and the city shall split the excess profits at 50 50. And so at some point, you know, we, I think, given another year or two with the clubhouse and additional revenue opportunities and the year round offerings, you know, I think if this could get to be a profitable endeavor, we now have a sustainable and revenue generating golf course. So we also noted in our contract that if that's the case, any revenue the city would receive would go back into improving the golf course. So then we have a, you know, we're starting to build some funds to maintain and improve the course for the future. So optimistic, and that's our goal. And I think this would align with some of our strategies we've discussed in developing revenue and sustainable operations. So with that, I can work, you know, in the next few weeks here before our next meeting, have some conversations with Forsome Golf Management and even see if they could develop a projected budget for 2021 so that we can factor in some of these costs that I mentioned where we're not going to have as much expense for equipment, but our repairs might be a little bit more and do some projections so we can kind of see what we might estimate 2021 to look like.
Jamie, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
Being it is park land, any improvements that made, I was approached by a member of the community on, you know, did I vote on that? And and we didn't vote on the new clubhouse. Doesn't say whether I'd be for or against it right now. But I'm saying, if it's a park, isn't it proper that we would be involved in the decision making with what goes on or off there from here on out?
Yes, and that is the normal process. I think some of this was operating under the emergency orders with the COVID-19 pandemic and the CARES funding. So that kind of was outside of our normal process due to timing. But yes, any other improvements or things like that that would relate to the golf course would come to the Parks Commission, Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission. For example, the fencing around the perimeter of the golf course has been a question lately of what do we do with that? Do we take it down? Do we repair it? That would be something that I could bring to you to decide, you know, by next spring, is it, you know, get your input on what, how we handle that? Do we want to take it down or leave it? And that would funnel through the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission.
I appreciate that. It's just not good to be blindsided about what we decided should be there and what shouldn't. So it would be just helpful to make sure everybody's included.
Karen, I just want to note, you weren't at the meeting when we talked about the clubhouse. So it wasn't a vote item, but it was an informational, and we were asked to provide feedback at that time. So just throwing that out there. I I said on social media to one person that I voted for it. Voting was probably the wrong terminology. But when Patrick brought that forward as part of the package with the other things, we did have an opportunity to chime in. So not an official vote, but.
What is the status of the of the clubhouse? Is it underway, being built?
The sewer connection has been complete. They've poured the concrete slab. And so everything is set to go. They're just, the next step is building it, which I believe is going to happen in the near, in the near future here. So but they did complete the sewer, and I think there was a water and sewer hookup, poured the concrete slab. So the foundation is ready, and then the next step is building. I don't have a timeline.
Is the CARES Act paying for the entire thing?
I don't have all, I don't know the answer to that, just because I haven't been closely involved in the CARES. I don't have all, I don't know the answer to that, just because I haven't been closely involved in the CARES funding. That's been kind of allocated to our emergency management team and city leaders. Um, I believe it's covering all of it or most of it, but I'd have to find out because I've had, as you'll hear in my staff update, I've been pretty busy in some other areas, so this is one that I've not been involved in.
Thank you.
To that level of detail, I should say. I've been involved in a high level.
When I do remember the meeting that I was at, there was a conversation about this is what's being done. But at that time, it didn't appear to me that conversation would be to change it or fix it. It was pretty much the money was there, and that's what they were gonna use it for. So it's it's a done deal now. I'm just saying, if it is park land, that when improvements are made or things are done, I think it would be who of us to want to have some information on, yeah, your name.
Noted, noted. Thank you.
All right, so.
Come.
Are we at the belts? Park master plan review?
Yeah, if there's no further questions on this, we can move on to that. Um, and so just want to pull this up here quick. Give me one second. Um, so I'm gonna kind of go through this quick. I want this on our agenda tonight as a discussion, just to get everyone on the same page with our next steps with this. I know at a recent uh we talked about we're planning for the future, but we also need to get some things done that are on our list right now. So we all agreed that continuing the conversation with the Belts Park Master Plan and executing at least one phase of that um as our goal for twenty twenty-one with funding that we currently have avail- available, whether it's park dedication fees um available, um the rotary donation um and um any other grant opportunities that we have coming up in the near future. So included, I just did, I included in the packet, I just want to go over this quick tonight as a quick discussion, just to make sure, again, we're all on the same page. Anticipate being able to start getting some quotes put together more specifically. Um, maybe that didn't get in there, but let me just pull this up for one second here. So I can share it with you guys. Um, but Doug and I had met, and we we, I think our main focus right now, and the the biggest response from the community was the shelter. And we we agreed that there's already, you know, the playground equipment is still sufficient. People are playing with it. Um, you know, we can keep that as is for now until we have um more funding available. So here, let me just pop this up here really quick. Okay, one second here. You think after a few Zoom meetings, you're you're a little more quick to to navigate, but not always. Okay. So just tonight, just to discuss, just so we're on the same page. Um, here is the three-phase approach for the Belts Park Master Plan. Um, phase one was the accessibility and playground improvement, so I highlighted the total cost was about four hundred thousand dollars. The phase two was the pavilion and entrance, which totaled right here about seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And then the phase three improvements were the sports facilities, which was um six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So, given that, um, that's kind of the breakdown if we would do the phased approach. And kind of going back up here to the phase two pavilion and entrance. You know, I think there's some things we could really look at to strike out of here. Um, I struck out the playground equipment on the slope. That's eight thousand dollars. Um, we probably really don't need this park entrance sign for five thousand dollars, because we already have a Belts Park sign, and I think that's sufficient for now. So just kind of looking at this um is for discussion tonight, does the Parks, Chosen Lakes Commission agree that we should um move forward with this being our focus, fine-tuning this cost estimate and bringing forward some actual proposals for what this cost might be? Because right now, you'll see here, the um part of the master plan, it was estimated that the new building would be about five hundred thousand dollars. And that could be, you know, in reality, when we start looking at actual designs, you know, I think that there's an opportunity for that to be reduced, depending on how detailed or not we get with that pavilion structure. And I know from the high school group and the many conversations we had as a committee with the church, um St. Peter's Church, you know, I think there's some unique features and amenities that we'd want to make sure we include in that um pavilion. So it's not just a basic pavilion. Um, there were some extra features that were recommended. So for discussion, you know, I think if everyone's in agreement on let's focus on this and see how we can make this be a reasonable and realistic project for two thousand twenty-one for next year, then we can fine-tune this and see if we can get a more accurate estimate with just this being our focus right now. So with that, I'm happy for any discussion. Um, if it should be, if you guys are in agreement, or if there's anything else you want me to look at, but otherwise, I'd like to start honing in on our our, what we'll call our first phase of this project, a belt spark.
So I agree.
Who uh? If we decide we want to, I I I agree, I think we could make some of um adjustments to this, sp- 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 specifically the building to get the cost down. Who, do we send that back to the engineer? Then is that what, is that uh who we hired to do, to set this in the first place? And if so, what's the cost to that now?
Well, that's a good question. I think given where we're at with this cost estimate, I think that you know, I could look into some of the, the companies that build and construct facilities. Um, I can look into some of that to see, you know, what some designs are. I don't think I need to have them source that out, per se. Um, they put this in there as a placeholder, developing this whole cost analysis. They would, the uh city engineer would work, you know, they would have insight on the mobilization, the grading, the concrete work, things like that. That's all items that I think are probably pretty set in stone for costs. Um, but the pavilion structure itself, you know, if we want to see what we can get for a three hundred thousand dollar budget, you know, I I can certainly source some options out with different companies as a starting point to see, and then we we may have to work with them a little bit. So I I would have to find out and, you know.
Yeah, I was wondering if this goes back to the, I I forget the name of.
Boltman Mank?
Yes, the, or are they done? They've done their portion of it and.
I feel like if I, you know, looking back to my notes, I feel like they've accomplished everything, except maybe they didn't attend, you know, there was a no- set number of meetings that they would attend. So I can see, you know, circle back with them to say, here's where we're at, here's where we want to go for next year. You know, do we, do you still owe us anything? Are we complete with this project? And if we need to do anything additional with them, what those costs would be? I would say it's pretty minimal. Um, and maybe some of it just falls into our city engineer costs that we have. But I will find, I can find that out. But I think the big thing is sourcing the the building, and that's work that I can do with different companies.
Sounds good.
We would look at incorporating the utility connections, right, and the plumbing piece of it.
Yeah, so this would include the water and sewer hookup, so we would have actual bathroom facilities the um option to have the running water, if we had like a little kitchen or obviously for the bathrooms anyhow, but yeah, it would have a water and sewer hookup, which is not too far off and um would have to, that would be something that looks like, looking at the estimate, we'd have to include that. Um, but some of these, you know, they have costs in here about with the trees and the shrubs and mulch. Um, those are just things that maybe the city has a resource that we can get a good price with, so I'm not so worried about some of those costs. I think the main thing is the water sewer and the building of, you know, building of the structure.
I like that idea. It includes everybody that we were talking about what they wanted first, and I think it would be a big step forward to show them that we're moving forward for them, that their time wasn't wasted.
Yeah, and I was thinking as we get in the next conversation, the next discussion item, we can talk about um the playground portion of this, if that's something that we build into the ten-year financial plan and have Belts Park be one of the first playground improvement projects as part of that. So I think that might align well with that strategic plan that we've discussed for the tenure planning. So I think it just makes sense to to build this facility, especially given, um, I think we're gonna be dealing with COVID for you know, for a while into twenty twenty-one, and I don't know yet where like this timeline could fall with construction and everything, depending on funding and whatnot, but if you know, it could be a nice facility to have at least summer of twenty twenty-one, if that's even feasible. Um, it really would provide a nice space for the community.
Well, and if we go with this first, and we do this right, it is one of, I would say, our first opportunities to have a little bit more premier rental facility like, you know, Dakota County and West St. Paul has, and so so there's some potential revenue here that could be reinvested into the other phases too. Because we really don't have a premier park um facility rental option.
And I know another, um, and Doug can comment if he ha- you know, has additional comments, but I know that the other piece was the tennis courts and pickleball courts, and we could potentially look at if we're gonna wait on that just a little bit longer to see what the cost would be to just repair those with our operating maintenance budget next year, just to make those a little nicer. I mean, that's just an option. I'm not saying we have to do that, but we could look into that to see. You know, it might be a small cost to make a little improvement on that piece as well. And then build in the the playground improvement into the ten-year financial plan. Hopefully for like, you know, maybe that's our first one, and we project that for twenty twenty-two, for example. And then I would say then, you know, we'd be able to, if we, if we, as we talk about the ten-year park plan, you know, maybe the phase two and three for Belts Park is our request for twenty twenty-two for the ten-year financial plan. So we figure out how much we want for the playground and how much we would need for the other improvements, and then that would be the first on the list for twenty twenty-two. And if that's funded, then we essentially have the Belt, Belts Park project completed. And that gives us something to accomplish next year, and then I know one conversation we had is let's not do this in phases, because how are we gonna know we're gonna eventually finish it? And I think if we have a strong case to city council that we want to complete this project, so we'll need, you know, that's our request for our twenty twenty-two um in the ten-year financial plan.
I think it's a good idea in the interim to um do some of the repairs on the basketball and tennis courts then. Uh, nothing major, just something that makes it playable. And uh, those would be next on phase two with the playground equipment, um which is still serviceable um as phase three.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I've seen, I think if we keep this on our forefront of one of our our big project in the twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two with the three phases, you know, there could even be other opportunities. I know it's we're going to a lot of uncertainties with COVID nineteen and the economic impacts and how that's gonna affect the community and businesses, but you know, if there was some groups or you know, an organization that wanted to, you know, have some sign, you know, signage or naming rights to a basketball court or whatever it might be. Um, I've seen many courts develop that are done wonderfully, and it's from contributions of fifteen to twenty groups, people or organizations that funded it. So you know, we could, you know, also look into something like that and you know, we'll build this when we have the funding for it kind of thing and help see if we do any kind of fundraiser. So there's other things we can think of to get that done sooner if we're waiting on the funding, if that makes makes sense, so.
I think getting funding any way we can is great.
Yeah, and so we'll see what, you know, maybe somebody will want to give back to the community. Um, and I think the outdoor space, as we go into spring next year, is going to be, continue to be very popular, and there's gonna be such a huge need in the community. So if there's organizations or groups that are able to support that, I think that they, you know, that might be an opportunity, so. So just wanted to, any other comments? Um, if we're in agreement, then the next steps on this is I will look into specifically getting some quotes for a building, um, so I can bring some ideas forward that we can take those maybe two or three options and discuss what we like or don't like, or where we need to modify from there. Um, but keep this as our focus, is getting that new building constructed. Does everyone seem ha- fair, does that seem like a good plan?
I agree.
Sounds good.
I agree. Thanks to you and Doug for doing the work on that.
Yeah, Doug's been a, he's been a big help in this project, so we'll continue to talk and work through some of the nitty-gritty details, so that we're making sure we take into consideration all the feedback from the community, especially the the youth group who helped kick off this initiative, so that we can make sure we recognize them in this effort um as we focus on some details here. So we'll be talking, Doc.
Good.
Right, so we have the ten-year park planning schedule?
All right, so just wanted to, again, kind of the same thing, is kind of keep focused on our ten-year park plan schedule and next steps. Um, I didn't quite get where I wanted to, but in my mind, um, just thought that in our December meeting, I think we should talk about, we, you know, at one of our last meetings, we said, how do we prioritize where we go from here, and which group do we start with to really drill down into um what that's gonna look like? I think Betty commented that she wouldn't even know where to start, because we have so many different categories. Um, I think in essence of time, I feel like starting with the park replacement plan might be the quickest and easiest with a short turnaround in December. Um, and then I was gonna propose that in January, after the new year, we sit down with our city engineer for the trail piece, because I think that's a good time for them. Um, it's not as busy. I think it's, we need a little more time for them to plan and get things ready. Because I think having some information prepared in advance of that meeting will be really helpful. So we don't need to talk through the whole schedule. I can email you that, but I was thinking we can kick off with um, you know, one of the easier, I want to say easier buckets, just that don't take a lot of time and preparation on my end, just because I do have quite a bit on my schedule right now. So it can certainly, it can be, you know, the park replacement plan, or it could be something simple of, you know, the community events um and talk about that and try to put a budget together. So um, and then January, I was gonna pencil in for the trails. Is there any? Um, I guess my last comment would be by our December meeting, I can lay out a timeline with the dates and topics that we can discuss, so that we stay on track for having a completed financial plan by July of next, of twenty twenty-one at the latest. So we're in, ready to present in alignment with any budget requests. So um, just need a little more planning time here, and I just want to make sure that we get on the same page and um, move forward with this, so we don't lose sight of meeting some deadlines on this. Um, the city council did talk about and had a first look at a draft ten-year financial plan last night. And um aside from a couple of small placeholders for recreation, um, there's nothing else in the ten-year plan right now for parks. So they are waiting for us to identify our priorities and what those costs would be. So again, talking about Elts Park. If we want to include the playground replacement project in that, we would have to identify specifically what we want to do for that playground and put a price to that. So that would be one item in the financial plan. Um, and then we would need to build that out through twenty thirty. Go ahead, Terry.
Um, I expressed my disappointment in the plan last night, so if y'all get an opportunity, you might want to go back and watch it, but um, I am going to the workshop or the the meeting next week to be able to express my concerns there publicly as well. There's really no excuse for, wh- when you look at what was brought forward to the council for the first time, there were estimations, um, nothing concrete there. Uh, but when when we're bringing forward adding, building a new public works building and a building, a new fire department, but we can't add anything into that ten-year plan for the staffing that we have asked for. For example, they know that we have a belt plan sitting out there at one point eight million. There was nothing in there for that either. And when I hear Patrick make comments such as that we're the stepchild off to the side, and if we were added into that budget, it would make the picture look worse. It's extremely disappointing to me. And so I am going to go to the meeting and express my disappointment in at least not having something added in there. We spent this time walking through our buckets of things. There are clearly some things in there that could have had estimated prices attached to it and I'm frankly, I'm just, I'm disappointed. And it's concerning to me when, again, it's part of the strategic plan is to make parks a priority, but there couldn't be anything included in the 10-year financial plan other than $60,000. Um, it doesn't. And I get it, I'm not asking for us to, I don't want us to raise taxes, but we can't, it, it's either going to be an investment and it's going to come somewhere and something else is going to give, or it's not. And somebody just needs to tell us that and we'll sit back and do nothing and let things continue to deteriorate, but I just wanted to share that. I'm incredibly disappointed. I expressed my disappointment and I would encourage you to go back and, and watch um, last night's meeting. Mara did bring it up. Um, is there anybody who is not represented here and and she specifically pointed out parks, which I appreciate, but I don't appreciate the other columns. If we had parks, then it's just going to get worse. Um, I expect more, so just throwing that out there.
Any other comments or questions, concerns?
Well, that's very concerning. I will be watching that here and will echo your thoughts. We, th- they sat and told us that we were a priority. You know, that, that parks, they want to make parks part of the priority. And to your point, without funding, that's and, and adding funding in my, just in hearing what you're saying, and my thought that's unnecessary. Very concerning to me. And I'm not for raising taxes, I can tell you.
I'm not either. I can tell you without a doubt.
And running for council recently, it's it's one of the biggest fears in this community is that taxes are going to be increased because they're already high enough. And, uh, they need to figure out how they can uh, get funding into the parks and then accomplish the other things that uh, need to be accomplished as well.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments. Um, you know, I will say, I know that this is uh, the, the first look at a financial management plan, and I know it's going to adapt and change. Um, you know, I, I know there are some things that are going to cost quite a bit of money in the Parks and Trails Department. Um, I think they're waiting for, you know, what those projects are going to look like more specifically and a more accurate estimate. Um, so I know our task is to you know, continue with that process and put our requests in for the, um, the financial plan and get that, make sure that they get in there and continue to advocate for parks and, and trails. Um, I do think as we continue in this process and we look at not only what our priorities are, identify them and put a cost estimate to it, I think we need to also be strategic in what year we're projecting those projects to take place in. I know that there's a lot of conversation around, you know, these numbers and not wanting to increase the tax, um, the taxes. So one key to that, and this is a very conservative report at this time, but you know, obviously one of the number one things when people are looking to move to a community is they ask about the Parks and Trails amenities. So I think strategically, you know, it might be worth considering some of our park and trail investments in the next five years so that we can improve our park system um, and make it a more desirable place for people to want to come live here and hopefully that'll increase the tax base to offset some of those other costs for the second half of the financial plan. So thinking strategically on when we, um, you know, want to make some of these investments for Parks and Trails. Um, I do think January will be really helpful for the trails conversation. Um, our city engineer, Ryan Goodman spoke last night. You know, he's done a fantastic job securing trail development throughout the community over all these years with in conjunction with street projects, so utilizing and leveraging um, state-funded or grant projects when they're developing streets, he's incorporated trail developments. So what I'm going to have them do is put together a map of all the segments of trails that we have, so we can look at it in January to see where those gaps are. So if we finish this trail connection, um, you know, what trail connection pieces do we need to fit, fill so that we have some significant or meaningful connections in the community and get that priced out. So I think that'll be helpful to see. Um, so I think there, you know, maybe we'll be surprised at how, you know, the trail development that is happening. There's also a big significant trail connection coming up on Highway 2097 project. I believe that's slated for, um, 2023. And Ryan will be able to speak to that more, but I think working through that with him in January um, will be really helpful, but um, we will get our projects identified, priced out and included in the, the 10-year plan, but definitely any, um, you know, just want to make sure that we're continuing this conversation and that we keep moving ahead for our next steps and stay focused on this.
Commissioner Steinblock, I just want to make one mention, it kind of falls into the expense card. I, first of all, I will make my opinion known because when our Patrick Casey was, you know, running for that job, he told me I was very active on the school board. And he said that parks and schools are the number one things that a community should look to because that's what builds families and, and brings people in. So I'll remind him that he told me that and put in my, um, two cents worth too, that parks are very, very important. But one thing I just wanted to put before I have to go to another Zoom meeting for the school. Um, we're not having any more talk, um, about buying the restaurant. Um, at this point with all the other things going on, is that, I haven't heard anything, so I'm assuming that that's gone. And I guess for now, for my own benefit, I would have to say I would hope it's gone because of the whole situation of who's got what money.
Yeah, so just, I know you have to head off, Karen, and I can follow up with you, um, separately if needed, but you know, Tim, Commissioner Gary, um, he and I have had a couple of conversations on it, just given the nature of his work and some, his familiarity with that product or that that parcel or that building. Um, we haven't gone in great detail. I wouldn't say it's completely gone, but it's just an interesting concept. Um, I know Mayor Bain had suggested we looked at some other similar models with municipal um, facilities that have a contracted restaurant service, so um, we haven't dug into the nitty gritty of that, but I, so I don't think it's completely gone, but I think there's an interesting concept there. Maybe not what you're thinking of, it's all city expense, um, driven or whatnot, so. I'm happy to talk to you about that if you want to give me a call tomorrow.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks for your time if you have to head out.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, any other questions? Um, but just so you all know, we'll keep this on our forefront and I'll put together a calendar a schedule so we can follow that and make sure we, um, are staying on track with things.
I think that's a great idea, thank you.
All right. Anything else on this from you guys?
Nope, I think we're moving on to the staff updates, the Forest Lake Senior Center and Communications.
I know it's getting a little late, so I'm going to run through these. I'll give a quick update. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know, otherwise I can kind of go through them here fairly quickly, so. Um, Forest Lake Senior Center, as you guys are aware, that, um, the former coordinator, um, hired from the Forest Lake Seniors Inc. has retired, so the senior center operations are going to roll into the city. Um, and we're in the process of transitioning that. I've, um, spent a significant amount of time navigating this transition, um, going over weekly, um, once or twice a week, attending their board meetings. Um, getting, you know, addressing any mail or inquiries that come in, um, so um, it's been time consuming, but we're working through that. Um, but ultimately, we had a board meeting with the Forest Lake Seniors Inc. group this last Thursday. And due to the increasing cases of COVID-19 in the community, um, it was recommended by the city and agreed upon by the Forest Lake Seniors board that we are going to close the center, um, for the foreseeable future until further notice, um, just to keep that high-risk population, um, and everybody safe. Really, it's just too risky to be out and about right now. So the minimal operations that were happening are going to be suspended. Um, this allows the city some extra time to transition. Um, and get a, you know, kind of transition over to the city and learn the operations, hire some staff, um, things like that, so. We are going to close the center for the time being. The seniors board, we're going to meet again January 7th to reevaluate, so. Um, as this transitions to the city, uh, I think it's important if there's ideas that we have to keep this population engaged, whether it's a Pennpale program or you know, start thinking of creative ideas, we can engage them to have some social connectedness, because I think this is going to be a difficult time for a lot of people as we enter the winter and a lot of people staying home again, so. Um, any questions on that? All right, so if no questions on that, um, the communications and recreation hiring. Um, the city of Forest Lake did post the position for the communications and recreation um, position this past, I believe it was, um, last week. So the first round of applicants to review will be November 20th. Um, and looking to get somebody hired by the January, the first meeting in January with city council is what we're shooting for. Um, this person will lead the communications plan and then also um, in the interim, until we have additional staffing at the senior center, they will help with some of the senior center transition. Um, to help offload some of that workload, work from me that I currently have as well, so. Any questions on that? Um, the fee schedule for 2021 parks, um, I did, this is going to the next city council meeting for discussion, um, but I did take into consideration our feedback. Um, we did add a resident and non-resident rate. And I was just going to show you on my screen really quick, here you go, so. We have, um, oops, sorry, the parks are right here, so anything in highlighted is just language that we changed. So I know our conversation was just that there should be a resident, non-resident rate. It's not percent based, but I know you also said a very nominal difference, so went with some, um, looked at what other communities offered and just did a very slight increase for non-residents. And I think that this still is a fair amount so that we still have people coming into our community, that it's not too high, that it's going to turn them away from that. So this is what's going for discussion at city council. Um, and if there are any comments or feedback, what, from what you see here, you can certainly let me know, um, send me an email or give me a call. Um, but I think this summarizes what Commission had portrayed to me. Um, I can zoom in a little if you want.
Jamie, can you send that to us, please?
Yes, I will. And this again is going to the next city council meeting for discussion, so. You will see that the softball, baseball, multi-use fields at Fenway are still to be determined and I did talk to Administrator Casey that, you know, these, we do need to spend a little time looking at other communities yet and figuring out what's a fair fee. Um, some communities have permits with their athletic associations, um, there's, could be tournament fees, so that's just a lot of work to be done yet, um, just to make sure that it's fair and equitable and it's going to work for all parties, so that's why you don't see a cost there. We also will need to eventually add fees for the senior center. They have several rooms that they rent out. Um, unfortunately, I am not aware of what those fees are right now and I'm hopeful to learn more about that in the coming months as we transition some of the operations with the city, so. With that said, I think this should have otherwise captured our last meeting notes. But I will send it out to you. Um, and I think this will be workshop or discussion. And then I believe final approval and adoption December 14th with city council, so if there's any concerns, we can address it. Um, any other questions?
No, I don't see any.
Um, okay, with that, I think we are on to just any other updates. Uh, just others, I've, you know, like I said, I'm helping with the senior center transition. I'm also overseeing the city's recycling grant decks right now. Um, so a couple of different things to the schedule, that's really been taking up some of my time, so I was optimistic I'd get you meeting minutes today, but I fell a little short on time, um, so I'll get those to the next meeting. Um, but definitely a very heavy workload right now. Um, and with that, just still working through some changes to the tree lighting ceremony. I know Terry and I have talked and she's helping, um, reach out to some organizations in the community and hopeful we'll just do some form of virtual tree lighting. Um, but that's kind of a fluid fluid right now, and I'm working as quickly as I can to get something sent out for the community on the tree lighting, so. Um, working as quickly as I can, but it's definitely a unexpectedly busy time right now with everything going on that's new and different, so. So I appreciate your patience and your, your help as we navigate through this. And that's all I have for updates unless there's any questions for me.
And for me?
Nope.
And for me?
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have a, any updates from anybody who's left or a motion to adjourn?
They're dropping like flies. I'm ready to drop.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right, you guys have a good evening. Thanks for your time.
You too, thank you.
You too.